Actually, I, um, yeah, Alamoza and Monavista and Del Norte. Um, yeah, I, in the process, you've got a six town area that really in the family valley. So you kind of get six different clear houses on each.
I can imagine. I can imagine. Well, I was actually born in Monavista, so.
Oh, were you?
Uh huh. My dad was originally from Skinner. That's where all of his family's from.
Oh, okay.
And he was going from there to Durango when I was about a year old, so.
Oh, very good. Well, my, uh, my daughter was born in Monavista.
Is that right?
Monavista Hospital.
Yeah, it's not a huge hospital. I don't know. Is it still even open? I don't even know.
No, it's not. The hospital is not open anymore. It's, uh, it's sort of, uh, police department who operates by there now. So, yeah. They've got a real nice hospital in Del Norte, though. I don't know if you've ever seen that.
No, I've not seen it.
It's a really nice hospital. It's not the main drag after.
Oh, that's the one that's off underneath the cut with that clip of the hills there, right? On the south?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. I have seen it.
Really nice hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, I, I actually had to go in there, uh, last year. I was down in Medicine Rowan and I tripped and fell and I thought I might have, uh, fractured one of my wrists.
Oh, shoot.
And I like do it hurt and then I said, I better go in there. So I had to go in and get that treated and all that. And they said, no, you just bring the little bit of breaking and stuff. And they were, I was just so impressed. They were so, uh, yeah, so professional and they're just a beautiful hospital. Doctors were really good. But yeah, yeah, if you live in that area, I think you have to feel pretty good. And they've got a good hospital in Alamoza, so.
Well, that's the one I, I know more of, um, because I think there's been a time or two and I've had relatives in that Paramosa hospital, um, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they've got some free things. They'll get doctors there too, so. Yeah. About ready for tonight.
Well, as much as you can be.
Should be easy. Don't look too tough, but.
That's what I'm hoping. But for some reason, I can't get the full packet to download. I don't know why. Maybe I can do it that way. I try to have my work computer has the, the agenda on it and then I use the iPad for this, so.
Yeah, I usually print out the agenda and then, uh, I usually save, save the, uh, entire, uh, packet on my, on my drive, just kind of as a backup and.
Yeah.
That comes sometimes while I do it back and look at it later. And I guess you can do it on the city side, but I, I don't know. I just like to have it on the hard drive, so. I haven't.
Oh, oh, dogs have good habits, so that's okay.
I don't know about that, but. I was trying tonight. I wanted to go outside and, um, and so I was trying, I was having trouble with my, hooking up to my Wi-Fi. I'm, I'm hardwired into my Wi-Fi and into my office, and so I normally don't have to worry about, you know, my, I'm, I'm hardwired into my wa- router. But it's not taking my password. I wanted to go outside and sit out on the patio and it wouldn't take my password, so. You know, just.
Well, you'll just have to stay in the air conditioning whether you like it or not, huh?
Yeah, maybe so.
Oh, well.
Although it's pretty nice out here. Not too bad.
I've been spending the whole day in the basement here catching up. I, since I was gone last week, I had lots of paperwork to, phone calls to return, so.
Yeah, never ending.
Nope.
Hello, Mayor. Good ones.
Hey, how are you doing?
Hopefully it'll be quick and you can get back outside, right?
Good. I like that.
Um, Allison, that's a great picture that we have.
Ooh, yeah, we're in fact. Thank you. That's, that's Bear Creek Park. It's just, um, I'm supposed to be in the picture too, so I'm resetting my camera. See if I can, if I can actually integrate myself, so I'll leave that up until my face pops up.
Wow. Yeah, he kind of looks like Mark Morrison in the background.
Oh, he is.
Yeah.
If it's looking less than it looks like it is, so. Hey, Jacob.
Hey, Jacob.
How's it going?
Hey. Jacob, did you, did you get everything?
Uh, yes. I think, uh, I mean, it's far enough. Good evening, folks.
Hi, Charlie.
Allison's lake shot makes me want to go fishing. Thank you, Allison.
We're good?
Two minutes.
All right, we've got more than Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, we're at fifteen seconds.
Okay.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the, uh, virtual regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council in Lakewood, Colorado on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, for those of you participating this evening for public comment, the call-in number is one two five three two one five eight seven eight two with a webinar ID of nine two four five two nine four three nine five eight. After entering that ID, press pound and then pow- pound once again. When we get to those, uh, opportunities for comment, please press star nine and star six to unmute. Uh, looks like we got a, it looks like a short agenda, so I hope we, uh, can get through this tonight and and get back to everybody's lovely evening. So with that, I will ask, uh, for a roll call. Mr. Clerk. Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent. Gutwine.
Here.
Bida.
Here.
Skilling. Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I am here.
Labir.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. I now ask that if you are able to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, moving right along, we have public comment. Uh, general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a city council meeting held in person in the council chambers. Again, your participation, uh, number tonight is two five three two one five eight seven eight two. Webinar ID nine two four five two nine four three nine five eight. You'll press pound and then pound once again, and then to request to speak, star nine. We'll have three minutes and I'll let you know when we are down, when you are down to thirty seconds. If you could please give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going. Mr. Clerk.
First is two four three four.
Okay. Say it one more time, please.
Two four three four.
All right. Good evening, caller two four three four. Your name and address or ward and I'll get you going.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Kentner and I live in Ward One. Go ahead and start.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, council. Four years ago, a grassroots initiative known as the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative turned in over seven thousand five hundred signatures, asking this council to implement a residential building permit allocation system that would limit growth and provide oversight for large projects. Four years ago, the citizens of Lakewood asked this of you, and four years later, this body has yet to honor the wishes of this community. First, you denied our right to vote for nearly two years. Then, after the voters finally had their say, this council passed temporary resolutions, which have effectively mooted our demands. The first resolution was approved at a special meeting fewer than two weeks after ballot question two hundred passed. It effectively delayed the law until twenty twenty and created a rush of building permits totaling over six hundred units issued in the last days of twenty nineteen. Then, in early twenty twenty, you created a temporary process to declare properties blighted for the one and only purpose of exempting them from the terms of the Strategic Growth Initiative. At this year's annual planning session, council set the priority of creating an inclusive committee of stakeholders to look at the Strategic Growth Initiative. But at your last meeting, you once again went against the promise and you dropped the idea of an inclusive group of stakeholders. Instead of being transparent and inclusive, this body is choosing to conduct a workshop, a meeting typically held outside of council chambers, not video recorded, and without any public comment. And what is the purpose of this workshop? How will it be determined what parts of the growth initiative need examination? Hopefully, the only topic on the agenda for the workshop will be clarifying that resolution twenty twenty dash seven has expired and there will no longer be blight designations for the sole purpose of making exemptions exemptions to legislation passed by the good people of Lakewood. Hopefully, for the first time, you will direct your staff to actually implement the law as intended. Hopefully, you will direct your staff to actually implement the law as intended. Four years ago, a grassroots initiative known as the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative turned in over seventy-five hundred signatures, asking this council to implement a growth management system. Four years ago, the people of Lakewood asked this of you, and four years later, this body has yet to honor the wishes of the community you are sworn to serve.
Right. Mr. Clerk, next, please.
Yes, Joshua Comden.
All right, Mr. Comden, name and address or ward and we'll get you started.
Yeah, my name is Joshua Comden in Ward One, and I'm just calling, uh, the usual call about trying to get a citizen review board for the Lakewood, uh, PD. Um, yeah, I just think it would be really nice to have something structured like the LAC would be very nice. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, so I plan on going to, I think it's the first responders night out that's happening, I guess, next week or something. So I will be attending that to, uh, you know, meet the nice, uh, men and women of, uh, the Lakewood PD. So thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else for general public comment? Star nine.
We have John Claus.
Mr. Claus, good evening. Give us your name and address or ward. I'll get you started.
Good evening, council. John Claus, Ward One, uh, twelve seven hundred West Nineteenth Place. Uh, just calling in to comment on, uh, Ms. Kentner's rants. Um, she's, uh, making this all sound very cloak and dagger, but one piece she forgot to mention with that is that she's, uh, she's currently dating a sitting member of council, which just hasn't been brought up. Um, it also wasn't brought up that, that significant other of hers, uh, during a meeting on June twenty-eighth. Tried to get a, a study session passed where she and a few other select people could rewrite the strategic, strategic growth initiative as they seemed fit. Luckily, a majority of council didn't vote for that. Um, it's all available on YouTube in case anyone's interested in the June twenty-eighth, uh, city council meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, anybody else?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak for general public comment?
I hear Lenora Herskavitz is trying to get in. She just sent me a, uh, text.
Right now, we have a Dr. K.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to Dr. K. Dr. K, name and address or name and, uh, ward. We'll get you three minutes started.
Couldn't you hear me? Uh, my name is, uh, Tom Keith and I live in Ward Five, and I wanted to thank you all for what you've been doing in terms of cybersecurity. And, uh, if there's time for feedback, I know you can't directly respond, but I was wondering if you had any thoughts about the ransomware that was used against, uh, the city of Lafayette and how we can continue to protect our great city and continue the great work that you are all doing.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and keep this open to see if, uh, I guess there's a resident. I'll also acknowledge that there were three comments on the line, one regarding five G, two regarding CCU with Ms. Herkovich being one of them. Okay, anybody else? General public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The, the use of the consent agenda has been made. Actually, real quick before I do that, I'm going to move up our urgency, um, motion to extend emergency declaration, and I'm going to do so, as, as you all know, uh, there's a couple of things on the agenda tonight, so the hope is that this will be the last extension of this. We do have a resolution regarding, um, changing our policies and procedures to allow for different types of meetings, and you can reference a memo from Ms. McKinney Brown that kind of outlines, uh, the different things that we need to do. So I would anticipate this is our last extension as the next regular meeting, we will be voting to end the ordinance that created the emergency declaration. And then we'll have the resolution in place to allow us to carry forward with, um, virtual meetings or hybrid type meetings. So with that, Mr. Labir, will you please make the motion?
I move to extend the declaration of disaster in the city of Lakewood, Colorado, resulting from the coronavirus COVID-nineteen pandemic pursuant to section one point two seven of the Lakewood Municipal Code, originally declared by proclamation of the Lakewood City Manager on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, extended by a majority vote of the city council on multiple occasions, and by this motion extended again until August ninth, two thousand twenty-one, unless earlier extended or terminated by the city council.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
A second from Council Franks. All right, motion is second. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes. So that's going to pass. What do we got tonight? Uh, nine? No, seven, ayes, two nays. I think the nays being Johnsons and Springsteen. Yeah, okay, good. So now move into the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are item of routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity and moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and for ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by city councils. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes, item six, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, naming the Open Space Park located at twenty-three.
Mr. Clerk, we lost you, so you're probably going to have to start over. Give it a moment. Looks like he is frozen.
What about now?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, item six, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, naming the Open Space Park located at twenty-three fifty South Wazir Boulevard, Peak View Park. Item seven, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, adopting updates to the city council policies and procedures manual. Item eight is ordinance O dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, repealing emergency ord- ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven, establishing rules and procedures for calling and holding emergency city council meetings and further declaring an emergency. Item nine is ordinance O dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, amending title two, chapter two point zero two of the municipal code of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, in connection with the adoption of rules and procedures for calling and holding emergency city council meetings. Item ten is ordinance O dash twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, amending ordinance. Correction, that is ratifying the codification of design review commission provisions in chapter two point five eight of the Lakewood Municipal Code and amending certain provisions thereof. And item eleven is accepting minutes of the boards and commissions.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Bida, you have your hand up. Did you want to, uh, pull this, or I was going to go to public comment on the resolutions before?
Well, we can either do it before or after public comment. I wanted to move to, uh, remove item six, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one thirty-six, the naming of the open space. So do you want to take that motion now or later?
No, I'll just remove it to general business.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll now open public comment on, um, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, since the other one has been removed. So twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, adopting updates to the city council policies and procedures manual. Does anybody wish to speak to that? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and I'll ask for a motion on the consent minus item six.
Uh, Mayor Paul, I move for acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions and order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Could I please have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the, uh, consent agenda minus item six. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will now ask for your vote on the consent. And that passes eight ayes and one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Counselor Springsteen, your hand is up.
Yeah, I was just wanting to comment, um, why we're just now getting around to this a year and a half layer, later after after we've been doing this for so long.
Counselor Johnson, is your hand up for the consent?
Actually, not for the consent. I was wondering if we were going to have an executive report tonight.
No, there's no report tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So will the clerk please read item twelve into the record?
Item twelve is ordinance O dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty, amending title two, chapter two point five six of the municipal code of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, in connection with the permanent establishment of a fourth subcommittee to the Lakewood Advisory Commission concerning diversity and other general amendments.
I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty. Ask if there's anybody that wishes to speak on, uh, the second reading. Please raise your hand, star nine. Okay, I'll close public comment, ask for a motion.
I move for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty, one second and final reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson, you are muted.
Sorry. As I'm reading this, it's an advisory commission concerning diversity. I think it would sound so much better if we would have a commission, um, concerning unity. I, um, I'm having some problems with the wording on this. And also, you know, situations like attempting to have equity through this, when you look at Head Start, that program is for children that, um, are socio-economically not as fortunate as some. And how would this affect things like that? Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, cast your votes. This passes, uh, eight ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Johnson. Mr. Clerk, will you please reread in item number six, resolution? Mr. Clerk, will you please reread in item number six, resolution 2021-36?
Yes, item six, resolution 2021-36, naming the open space park located at 2350 South Wazir Boulevard, Peak View Park.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on resolution 21-36. If anybody wishes to comment on the naming of the new park, please raise your hand, star nine. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Counselor Bita.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I asked to have this pulled because I am opposed to the naming of this park at this time and I wanted to be able to go on the record as such. My biggest opposition, well, there's two, two points. One, I think the naming of this property is premature. We don't even know yet for sure when it's going to be open so to the public. It's been going on four years now since, well, it is, yeah, going on four years since we purchased the property. And we've had, I know we've had a lot of difficulties with access and so forth, but the problem is the public has not even had a chance to experience this open space. And I think until you actually are on, on it and have a chance to spend some time on it, hiking around and see what it's all about, it's, I think it's premature to, to have assigned a name to this property. Secondly, and, and I, and it's no secret that I have lobbied for naming this as a memorial park to our veterans, some sort of veteran memorial park. That's no secret and I, and I continue to lobby for that. We don't have any really significant memorial in Lakewood to our veterans and especially to those who have lost their lives in foreign conflicts. I know in my research, and I mentioned this before, we have over 100 listed in World War II, Korea and Vietnam, who have lost their lives in, in foreign conflicts from the Lakewood, either Lakewood City or Lakewood area, and that doesn't even include the Gulf Wars. So, you know, we have a significant, we owe a significant debt to our veterans and I think this is a very unique opportunity to, to name this park in their honor and, and ultimately to place some sort of a memorial there for them because of the contemplative nature of this park, which you really can appreciate until you spend some time on it. So I think this naming is premature and I'm going to be voting no. Thank you, Mayor. That's a you for.
Great, thanks. Counselor Springsteen.
I, I support Counselor Bita on this. We have a unique opportunity to show some respect to the veterans in our city and there has been a lot of interest in naming this park in, in compliance with that. And I'm a little confused about how this process even works. What usually happens is things get kind of pushed through. If the public gets to participate at all, they get to like choose from three things and it's not really a choice. And so I would love to see a little more thought put into this and the idea that, that we have this wonderful space where we can honor our veterans, I think is something we should really consider. We, we don't have anything quite on that level at this point in Lakewood and there's a lot of veterans, including my, my grandfather who lived in Ward Three, who served in World War II and, and he would love if I would support this. Thanks.
Counselor Abel, then Johnson.
I agree with the sentiment expressed by both Ward Three counselors. And it is in their ward. I would defer to them. I would prefer actually to see it named after the Taylors. But our unfortunate policy is that we can't name it after someone until a certain period after their passing. So in lieu of that, I, I do think the veterans deserve our attention and respect, and this is a good way to show it. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson, then Gutwin.
Thank you. It was said that there was a survey and I did see some comments, maybe 2025, I'm not sure. Was this also put into looking at Lakewood for people to weigh in for the naming of this? And I only saw one comment when I went through them for the park, Peak View. I would have to agree with Councilman Bita. Councilman Roy Ball, when he was on council, both of them were fighting for this land in order to look at someplace in Lakewood that could have a site for our veterans. And I, I'm not sure why that isn't considered and naming it right now does seem a little bit premature to me until people have a chance to go up there and and see how solemn and sacred it feels up there. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to kind of let folks know that there was a public process. Anyone who's watching and that people did have a chance to weigh in and we were all encouraged to, you know, put the word out to our board and email lists and you know, I don't know the, the number of people that participated, but we do get really great participation through Lakewood Speaks. So I really want to thank everybody who did take the time to weigh in. I really appreciate, you know, that, that you kind of stepped up and wanted to play a role in what your city looks like and, and naming the park. So I'm really glad that we had a public process that was accessible to the community and thank you to everybody who weighed in. I will be supporting the, the voice that you took the time to to voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Labear, can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, sure. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-36. Yeah, do I need to add anything to that?
No, I think you're good.
Second.
Well, thanks.
So we have, we have a motion a second and I just want to say a couple of things. I actually brought the original request for council action to look for opportunities for our veterans' memorials, seeing that we've had certainly younger generations that have, that have been fighting in wars. And so that, I brought that forth and we certainly talked about the naming of the park numerous times. And this went through a public committee and it went through a public process on Lakewood together. And that's, you know, I think suffices for me. Would I like to have seen some other things, certainly. But this is the community's piece. It's something that I'm proud of, something that Ms. Hodson and I worked on for a long time and I certainly would say Ms. Hodson really was the key factor in securing this piece of land with her relationship with the Taylor family. There has been a commitment by our parks folks to honor our veterans there. And that's super exciting for me in such a beautiful place. So I look forward to what that next phase ends and I'm excited to get this going and the, the presentation talked about construction starting this year to start to get access in first phase. And you know, down the road, if this is something that another council wants to change or do something different, that's certainly okay, but I think it's important to move forward. Pike's Peak is a center point of Colorado and that's what this is named after with those incredible views. So with that, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. That passes five ayes, four nays, the nays being Johnson, Bita, Abel, Springsteen. Okay. Anything else under general business? Go to reports and I'll start in the, with Ward Two and I'll go two, three, four, five, one.
I'll save you some time and just say, go Team USA.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for filling in on the motions tonight. Much appreciated. Ward Three.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a very good board meeting this last week, well attended. It was good discussions and appreciate everybody participating. I also wanted to mention, Mayor, with your permission, the Budget Audit Committee coming up on July 28th, 5:30. Again, I know I brought, I brought it up last week, but we're going to be looking at some very important things. It's the beginning of the budget process, the public budget process. And so certainly any, all, all counselors are invited to participate as well as members of the public. It is, it is open to the public. We're going to be going over, of course, the audit of the city's books. So we'll be receiving that audit. We'll be talking about changes to the budget book for the coming year. A letter that we're going to be preparing from the Budget Audit Board to help assist the public and the council in navigating through the, through the budget book. And also, we're going to specifically be looking at the use of the CARES Act money, the Tabor money and the relief, the COVID relief funds that have been coming from, from the federal government during the last year. So we'll be looking at where those are going, some of those are going to be used or have been used. So those are all, I know, items of considerable importance and I wanted to bring that out. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor.
Yeah, we had a good meeting on Saturday. I wanted to again bring attention to the fact that week after week after week, we continue to have violations of public participation. Again, tonight we did. There were at least three people who could not get in to speak during public comment. We fly through that. I would note that Counselor Abel was able to say something about it without being muted by the mayor like I am. Maybe because he's a male, I don't know. But there is a problem when week after week after week after week, people cannot publicly participate in these meetings. And I'm calling it out again, like I do every week, like I have for over a year. I would mention also that I had told my ward about how we as counselors are kept ineffective. And one way is I'm looking at you right now on an iPad that was given to me before the pandemic. That is about six inches wide. I can't even read the agenda on this thing or see all the people participating in this meeting. We are kept ineffective because we're not even as basically volunteers given tools to participate in these public meetings. Crazy, crazy. And then finally, I want to mention again the criticism that our city continues to take in terms of not having body cams in place yet with our police and and being one of the only municipalities in the state and in the country to be in that position right now. And I keep urging us to move it along and I believe that a lot of, there, there's going to be a lot more criticism about this if we don't address this. Thanks.
Word Four.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I wanted to thank all the participants who attended the Ward Four meeting. I was not in attendance, but Counselor Skilling did a fine job with that. He said it was a good and productive meeting. So I wanted to thank folks and continue to encourage participation. I also wanted to, I've had outreach from several people regarding wanting to engage in our budget process and many folks asking about kind of, you know, how do they find more about the finances? And the folks I spoke with were not aware of our Lakewood ledger. So I wanted to just call people's attention to that. If you go to ledger.lakewood.org, you'll be able to kind of pull up that ledger and be able to kind of look at that historic spending. And that might help us for some conversations where you want to add some input into the process. So please bookmark that. For city staff, I wanted to indicate that I did have one piece of feedback that said it was difficult to find when I just said, you know, the Lakewood ledger. And so the search engine, if we can just make sure that the search engine returns Lakewood ledger in case people didn't write down that URL, that would be helpful. The other thing that I wanted to kind of throw out for council consideration, I'm really more in preparation for our annual planning meeting that'll obviously come up in, in January, is I'm getting a lot of feedback from our constituents regarding after hours park usage and just concerns. And we know it's a very complex topic where there is, you know, some people want extra lighting, some people don't want extra lighting, some people want the parks to be gated off. And, and, and so I just wanted to kind of put that out really early for us all to start adding to our ward meeting discussions to see if there's something legislative. Certainly staff understands that we've got some parks of concern. But want to just throw that out there for everyone. And the last thing is I too want to keep reminding people that certainly, you know, there is always challenges with technology. But I have offered multiple times, I will continue to offer if anyone needs any assistance from a technology standpoint, it's my profession. And so I want to provide my, my message line if I can be of any assistance to you. Certainly you can always email me at bfrank@lakewood.org, happy to work with you. But my phone number message line is 720-515-6501. We certainly want to hear from you and certainly in the case of Ms. Hershkowitz, certainly she left a written comment. So I'm sorry that she was not able to get in to verbalize that, but that is another way to make sure that you get your comments in is Lakewood Speaks. But certainly if you want to have a discussion, let's make sure, please reach out to me, 720-515-6501. I want to help you make sure that you can give your verbal comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors Gutwin or Harrison? Word Five.
Dana, I'll go first and, and talk about our upcoming meeting and then if you want to add anything to that. We're going to have a real live meeting. I'm excited, in person. Saturday, August 7th, at the Westwood Community Church, which is a different place than what we have been having. So I'm very excited about that. It will be 9:00 AM. And we will start with coffee cookies and gab to catch up. I'm sure we'll have lots to discuss. But again, August 7th, 9:00 AM, Westwood Community Church, live and in person. I'm excited. Also wanted to remind everybody that we have National Night Out coming up next Tuesday. Those of you in Ward Five that want to wander by my house, you're welcome to come by. We're going to be having a little gab out here in front. So see you then. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Gutwin.
No report, just a question. Karen, are you going to be making cookies this time? Because me and the whole family miss your cookies. My kids know Karen is the cookie lady. So looking forward to it.
Word One, take us home.
Thank you. Ward One will also be having our next ward meeting August the 7th at 9:30 in person. It will be at the Holy Shepherd Lutheran Church at Ninth and Kipling. And we have two special guests invited. Kathy Kentner and Jeslyn Shahrazani, the two counselors or the two ladies that are running for city council. Look forward to seeing them and meeting them both. And the second thing, I'm actually becoming a little concerned about the, the ability for people to make public comment myself. I'm actually becoming a little concerned about the, the ability for people to make public comment myself. Uh, last time after our meeting. Uh, one lady that is very credible had tried several times to get in and could not. I'm not sure. All the specifics, it's over my pay scale as far as. Some of this technology, but I am concerned. We've been doing this for over a year. And I can see that there is actually growing frustration. So maybe we can work on that, Kathy. Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you, Raimi. Uh. I, I concur about the, uh, folks trying to get on by phone, um. Ms. Herskowitz has been able to do it a number of times in the past and couldn't tonight. So it is obviously, uh, not lacking skill. Uh, there must be a glitch in there somewhere and if we can resolve it. Um, that would be a very good thing. Uh, I, I dislike having folks try to make comment and not being able to. However. When we go to our new format. Um, folks can come up, I suppose, and. Look us, uh, in the eye and then tell us what we're doing, whether it's right or wrong or indifferent. Thank you.
Alright. So I had the great opportunity and I issued a proclamation to celebrate Mount Air Christian Church's one hundredth anniversary. So went over there on Saturday and had the opportunity to be with, uh, pastor. Uh, Ruben Rodriguez and, and his community and, and the church and all they do for outreach to that neighborhood. But one hundred years and it was a great celebration. Uh, probably one of the first since twenty nineteen that I've been to. And, uh, the cat team was out there with our old police cruiser. And they al- also had one of our homeless navigators with them and to date. They have now housed eighty-four people, so. Certainly so proud of them and, and we know the ebb and flow and the challenges that we see grow in the community. Um, you know, it is fact when Denver moves people around. People move to Denver or move to Lakewood and so that is a reality and I know our folks on the. East side are seeing increases and these folks are working extra hard to try to find the resources, so super proud of them. Uh, info for a workshop, still a couple of weeks away, but if you want to get kind of those topics. Or things that you want to try to talk about to, um. To, uh, Travis or. Myself, be happy to, uh, get those to, uh, the folks so we can, um, make sure we're set to go. And with all of our meetings, um, outside of executive session, the community is, uh, welcome to attend. Any of our meetings that are available. Like to just mention, I was appointed to the Affordable Housing Transformational Task Force. As the local representative for the state of Colorado. And that has to do with House Bill thirteen twenty-nine, which is looking to allocate five hundred million dollars. Through, I think, CARES dollars to affordable housing. Super excited about that and want to thank Speaker Garnett for putting me forth on that. And hopefully we can. Make some big impacts in affordable housing in the state of Colorado. It's going to go fast because I think the recommendations have to be in by next. Session. Um, two last things, just real quick, you know. Hybrid's cool, but I can tell you. I'd much would rather go back to just in live meetings because having these conversations every meeting about. Folks not being able to get in is frustrating. Uh, I give a lot of time and I can watch right here on my side and I think all of you can too, when hands don't go up. I have no choice but to close public comment and we've tested these numbers throughout. I know councillor Franks is really good about testing these numbers when folks say they can't get through. But, uh, certainly it'd be a lot easier because this, you know. Idea that somehow staff or cities like not letting people through, it's just, it's Looney Tunes. And it's not factual and that makes me want to just go right back to regular meetings. Where everybody has an opportunity to be heard live and in person. And then lastly, there was some comments made. Most people do this for free. This isn't a job. This is an honor to represent the community. And, um, you know, we have all the equipment. I frankly use my own equipment. Um, because I use a laptop and I use my own, so. You know, we, we sign up for this, we know full, full bore what we're getting into, we know what it pays. And I think to a person, most people in this body would do it for free. So with that, I am done and I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-five. Thanks.
I resent the implication that I said anything about the staff, mayor. I did not.